Well, God, we thank you for your goodness to us. We thank you, Lord, that you are the Creator and the giver of life. Lord, we pray about our decisions tonight, that you would help us to make the right decisions for this city. We thank you for this city. We thank you for this country. And tonight, Lord, we lift up Officer Heath Edens and his family to you and pray especially for them. These things we ask in Christ's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we call the meeting to order tonight, I think Ms. Weider Wright would like to share something with us briefly.
Good evening. I placed at each one of your places a thank you gift. It's the Master Gardener calendar for 2018. And we hope that through the next year, you'll be able to enjoy some beauties of Arkansas because there's a photo contest each year statewide of master gardeners. And the photos selected are all taken in Arkansas by master gardeners. They're all amateur photos, but there are four in the calendar this year. Two big ones, I think, and two small ones from Faulkner County. And the Faulkner County master gardeners want to say thank you for your service and thank you also for funding the position that's so important to us, our advisor, through the extension, Corporate Extension Service. Master gardeners are over 200 strong now in Faulkner County. And this past year, we volunteered over 14,000 hours. So if you placed a monetary equivalent on that number of hours, you would have about seven full-time employees. So we just want you to know that we appreciate you. We appreciate the City of Conway and we look forward to working, continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lynn. And the master gardeners, they do know that I apologize for my little mistake with them. Thank you. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
And Mr. Pruitt will not be here tonight. He is sick and he needs to stay home. I'm sure he's watching on TV. Mr. Pruitt, we appreciate you staying home, sir.
Oh, Mr. Pruitt. Wherever you are.
All right, you should have received copies of the November 14, 2017 minutes. Any corrections or changes?
For approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six, seven, zero. Next up, we have a presentation of the monthly financial report. Mr. Tyler Winningham.
Numbers look better, don't they? Got 1.6 million net revenue through the month of October. You can see the big contributor there. We've got almost a million and a half dollars collected in ad val money. It's that time of year. We'll get that. We'll get some more this month in November. And then that'll improve the bottom line even more. Sales tax, good news there as well. It was up seven and a half percent this month. That puts us up five and a half percent year-to-date. If that, you know, up five and a half percent through 10 months, it's going to take some pretty, pretty big downs in November and December to make that drop. So if it stays up five percent, five and a half, that's about a million dollars for us. So it's going to be. On the expenditure side, you can see, you know, our department heads continue to keep that spending under control. We're down five percent compared to a budgeted average. So that's, all those factors contribute there to a good-looking general fund, hopefully, for the year of 2017. Tonight, I'll keep it short. I don't really have anything to mention about any of the other funds. They're all healthy and doing, doing good as well. So that concludes my comments, maybe.
The way you stepped up there, I thought you were taking credit for the sales tax increase.
Mm.
Go ahead.
No, I mean, I shop in town, but I don't.
Reach around here.
I haven't spent a million more dollars this year, I promise you.
He won't even buy a hunting license, Mr. Hawkins.
Here we go.
He won't even buy a hunting license. He's pretty tight. Really? If the indicators for a... I mean, he's not spotlighting or something at night, is he? I don't know. He just won't buy one. Garrett and I tried to get him to buy one. He just won't do it. If the, if the traffic in the parking lots or any indication about the weekend after Thanksgiving, we're going to have a good, great November.
Thanks, officer.
Thank you, Ms. Winningham.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the monthly financials.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financial. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is seven to zero. Okay, next up, we have a public hearing to discuss closing entirety of the, I'm sorry, closing on the entirety of the North-South Alley and Block 6 and all of the North-South Alley and Block 8 in the Burns Edition. Mr. Brenner and Mr. Gene Salter will be speaking to this. Okay. This is associated with the Pine Street project off of Seba Morgan. This will bring some affordable townhouses and homes to this neighborhood. All townhomes will front Seba Morgan. And nine homes will be included in the neighborhood for this project. And our office has really been pushing, and I know Salter's and Mr. Finn, we've been working to really get this moving because the city's been ready to move on this for some time. And I will ask anyone at this time if they'd like to speak for or against this item. Counsel, I'll bring it back before you.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Have a motion to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this. Any further discussion? Number, Mr. Garrett?
The O-17, 133.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. And that was 133?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Next, we have a report of our standing committees, starting with Community Development. Mr. Hawkins, we'll turn this over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this agenda is resolution setting a public hearing to discuss closing of a portion of the utility easement on Lot 18 in the La Husky subdivision. And this runs from Halter to Bill Dean Road, it looks like, and the easement from Amity into that area. We have a resolution. It's R-17...
Sixty.
And I'll make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt or set the public hearing for the next council meeting on December 12, 2017. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance approving private club permit for Red Robin Conway Club in Conway. And we have an ordinance to be read for this. It's ordinance O-17, 134.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a professional service agreement with Half Associates for design services for the Stone Dam Creek Trail. And Ms. Jones?
Mr. Benson could not be here tonight. So this is just y'all's consideration for, to be able to sign a contract with Half Associates. We've got Brian Vines here tonight. This is gonna, basically, we're going to be able to start our, you know, doing our surveys, our concept plans and things like that because Finley and I had the idea that we would start procuring construction money in 2018. Our highway department, Metro Plan, we've kind of got a list going. And we're going to need some help from them to be able to get some good estimates together and some really good ideas and some environmental issues and things like that. So that's what tonight's here for. And I've got, y'all've got a copy of the contract and I can go through every little piece and Brian can answer anything. But do note that back in April, they took, you know, the normal RFQs and they picked this group from that group of RFQs from April 2017, so.
This is the final version of the agreement that I worked through with your general counsel.
Excuse me, I hear you say.
I'm sorry. This is the final version that you have of the agreement to the general counsel from Half Associates and I worked through.
Thank you, sir.
There were some changes and things that I...
I'll pre-approve by that.
Make a motion. We approve this agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the contracts with Half and Associates. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property in the 1200 block of Covington Way. It presently is zoned I-3. The requested zoning is MF-3. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their regular meeting, November 20 of this year. And at that time, the commission voted eight to nothing to send this to city council with a recommendation of approval. We have an ordinance to read for this. It is ordinance number O-17, 135.
Make a motion that we waive three readings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a request by Salter Acquisitions to amend existing permit number 1288 to allow multifamily in an O-1 zoning district. And this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on November 20 of this year. And at that time, the commission voted seven to one to send this to city council with a recommendation of approval. With the condition, and that condition is that the multifamily units are limited to 216 in this particular piece of property. And with that, I move that we grant this request.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended portion of this conditional use permit with the condition in it. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. Garrett?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
And the last item I have is consideration to modify the final development plan for a portion of Club Villa's PUD located at 1135, 1145, and 1155 Country Club Road. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on the, I'm looking for the date on this, on October 16. And the Planning Commission voted zero to six with one abstention that this request be forwarded to city council with a recommendation of approval. That means that they voted to not approve this. And so I guess there is a request to speak tonight to this.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name's Landon Sanders and I'm here on behalf of Pennington Homes tonight to talk to you guys about the Club Villa's PUD amendment. And it was voted zero to six in the, in the Planning Commission. But we've readdressed some of the issues that they brought up and worked with the neighbors to kind of address some of those issues, which I'll discuss with you. This plan, the Club Villa's PUD, when this was first converted to a PUD, it was a whole strip of like 13 lots. And this is only involving the top three, the northern three lots. And the proposal was to increase this from three units to seven units. Well, that was met, you know, with disapproval from a couple of neighbors and from the Planning Commission. So we went back to the drawing board, worked with the neighbors and tried to come to a better solution to make everybody happy. And so what we, what we've, what we're now proposing is that this be increased to six units. And so it's still plus three units. And there are some proposed restrictions that we proposed after working with the neighbors to add to this PUD, to make this acceptable for everybody. At the Planning Commission meeting, there were two neighbors who spoke in opposition. One of the neighbors, I believe they're here tonight, primarily objected because of the private drive and the density. The private drive was an issue for them because they didn't want anybody driving through their yard. And so what we've done on that to fix that situation, if you look at that packet that I handed out on page two and on page three, you'll see Lot 1, it's got a bigger home and you've got the private drive. We moved the private drive north to where it does not contact the southern, southwestern lot there owned by the Nash's to protect their fence and keep anybody from driving through their yard. And essentially now, that first lot is no different than what the current zoning specifications are for that, that area. This was zoned for three lots. That's going to be roughly the same as what it would be currently. The big difference is the remaining property there, where you see five proposed homes and the private drive. And the neighbor that is to the west of that, she was also at the Planning Commission meeting and spoke in opposition. But her primary concerns were privacy, which we've addressed those issues by coming up with window restrictions. And there's an eight-foot screening area with evergreen trees and traffic bollards and everything to protect her privacy in that area. We've also been discussing making an eight-to-10-foot fence requirement for her to help with her privacy concerns. And I believe, that's Ms. Ellis, she actually owns two of the homes that are to the west of that lot, of that property right there, as you'll see on page three of that handout. And I believe Ms. Ellis is actually in favor of this project now that we came up with a solution to address her concerns. So that leaves, the key issue here is density. And, you know, we reduced this by one, by one unit. It's still much more dense than it is currently approved for, but we believe this isn't inconsistent with an R1-zoned area. This is a PUD, but it is consistent with R1 is how we modeled this. And as you guys probably recall, back in July, you passed a, an ordinance, 17-80, I believe it is, that decreased the minimum square foot for each unit or for each lot. And if you take the square feet for that property there, that actually is, that would fit seven units according to that new ordinance. So six units is smack dab in the middle of being okay there as far as density, based off of, solely off of the square footage of each lot. We also don't think this is inconsistent because, you know, this is in a R1-surrounded area and this follows that, that R1, that new square footage requirement. This is also, we believe, in line with the City of Conway's goals for 2025. One of those goals is to create more truly high-density residential developments. To do that, we're going to have to sacrifice in some areas density to come up with truly high-density neighborhoods. This is, this is similar to that of Princeton Village, if you guys are familiar with that. Princeton Village and Hendrix Village, these homes are going to be similar to that. They're, that craftsman-style home is one of the conceptual drawings that we came up with that you'll see on, on the front of your packet. And the density is the main issue. But for the neighbors, I think the main issue is, is going to be the drainage. There's a horrible drainage issue in that neighborhood and this is supposed to alleviate that issue. that issue and divert the, the rainwater to the, uh, there's a drainage ditch to the north, and it's gonna alleviate the Ellis's severe drainage issue. And then finally, uh, I talked to Ms. Mel today on the phone, and I wanted to address an issue that she, that she raised, and that was, where's there going to be visitors parking in this proposed development? Well, if you look at page four, this is a conceptual drawing, and at the bottom of the page, that's gonna be the, the western part of the, of the home that's on the private drive. There's a two-car garage, and then connected to that, there, there's a space for a visitor parking, and so that answers your question, Ms. Mel, that that's where, that's where visitor parking is, is located. And so that is, uh, my presentation. We're just gonna request that this be approved. Uh, we believe that, that the density here is, uh, is, while it is double what it's currently approved for, we think it's consistent with a R1-zoned area, and so is, do you guys have any questions for me?
This doesn't have anything to do with the prior development?
No.
Other than that first, that most southerly house looking more like those houses?
No, sir. This has nothing to do with it.
And then the houses up a little farther north, and again, you want, you started with seven, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And we're down to six?
We're down to six, and we've shifted that private drive, uh, essentially, those are the big changes since the Planning Commission meeting. We've reduced the density by one, and we shifted that private drive north, so it, uh, doesn't affect the Nash's property, and, um, you know, that private drive, it kinda came into fruition after working with, uh, the planning department and, and working with Mr. Pennington and, uh, discussing this with the neighbors. The goal with that private drive is to minimize curb cuts, that's the whole reason we've done that, um, and, uh, to keep, you know, since there's more homes, there'd be, uh, less traffic at the same time, it'll kinda control traffic a little bit better.
And I do appreciate you doing that.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate y'all putting that together.
Yes, sir.
You said that someone was here that was opposed to this?
Yes.
That is now not opposed to it?
Yes. Ms. Rhonda Ellis, she's here tonight.
And which home does Ms. Ellis live in?
She owns the two homes that are to the south, uh, no, to the northwest.
Okay, I see them, I see them marked?
Yes, sir, and hers is, are the most directly affected with these changes, I would say, because hers are where the private drive is and where these five proposed homes are.
Okay.
And I believe that the Nash's are here as well tonight.
Okay. Um, anybody else wanna talk?
Anybody else have any questions about this project?
And originally, the three lots that were there, we're just gonna have one home each.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's really gone from three homes to six homes.
That, that's right, yes, ma'am, that's right.
And how, how far apart are these?
Well, if you look at page two there, I think, uh, it was about 10 feet. I think that since we've reduced the density, it's actually a little bit more than that, and so I, I think it's gonna be similar to that that you'll see in like Hendrix Village, so if you drove through there, it's gonna be similar to something like that between the homes.
Ryan, these numbers fit what we're doing now, what we did change earlier this year?
Well, we changed to 6,000, right?
Yeah, as far as, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Sanders, hang tight, though.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The, um, what he says is true about square footage, but actually, my computation be you could only get five homes across there if you were to make it R1, single-family zoning, and the reason being is not the square footage is the 60-foot wide, you'd have to have at least 60 feet wide, so you'd end up with a deeper lot than required actually by our new changes, but you, each lot's gonna have to be at least 60 feet wide, and the property's 330 feet long, so you basically get five and a half, whatever, so you get five homes in there if you were to, um...
Five total?
Right.
Not just the five in that one spot?
Five in that, those three lots that we're talking about.
Okay.
Those could become five, basically, if you rezone them to straight-up R1 zone.
Okay.
And, and like he says, this, this figure one way, by the square footage, that's correct, you could get, I think he said, the same number, six or seven, whatever, but you can't really cut it that way, 'cause you have to, each lot has to have street footage, all have to be at least 60 feet wide, so therefore, you end up with five.
I got you.
So you're one over, if you look at it from that angle, you're one over the what's allowed under the, if it were zoned R1.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, when you're going based off just strictly square footage, that's where you get that figure.
Yeah.
Uh, it's about an acre, and so if you divide that by the 6,000 square feet in that new ordinance, you get like 7.2 units.
Yeah.
So that's where I get that figure.
I got you, I got you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any more questions, guys?
Would anyone else like to speak for or against this?
Thank you.
If you would state your name and address, please.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Rhonda Ellis. My husband and I own 1140 and 1150 Applewood, which borders this proposed project directly to the west, and you'll see our property in the handout that Mr. Sanders, uh, gave you. Our biggest concerns initially were privacy, safety, and drainage. Uh, the privacy, for very selfish reasons, of course, as you can see on your page, um, the privacy issue was because of our pool and our poolhouse. We, because these houses are gonna have to be built so very close to the fence line, we were very concerned about second-story windows peeking down in there. Safety because of the driveways being so close to the existing fence, and the drainage because we currently do receive a very terrible runoff of heavy rains from this property onto the back, onto our backyard, thus causing incredible amounts of water onto our property. But we have been in very close communication with Mr. Pennington. Mr. Pennington has worked very well with us. He has been in my backyard, he's walked my property to see all of the concerns that I have, and he has very much legitimized our concerns. We've worked with him to find good, solid, working solutions to these, to these issues as well. So if the city will approve the project subject to Mr. Pennington's agreed-upon compromises with us, meaning allowed for the restricted window placement, he has agreed to not put any west-facing windows, which means that wouldn't peer directly down into my backyard while, while we are, and guests are in our pool and things like that. The eight-foot screening area, I had requested, uh, evergreens that could potentially grow to 20 to 30 feet would help with, with the privacy issue, um, and those, those, that screening area to be monitored and maintained by the POA that is, that is, um, organized in those homes, and also raising our fence to an eight- or 10-foot privacy, privacy fence, we're working on that with a fencing company now. Adding bollards to the ends of the driveways, both of the driveways are gonna be directly on, next to my, my fence row, my property line, and I feel like the bollards there would help in case somebody, you know, tried to turn in that driveway too fast and didn't, weren't paying attention and went through the screening area and into my fence. I feel like the bollards being in place would help that tremendously, and, and he very much agreed to, to do that as well. And of course, in the process of all the construction, our, our drainage issue would be naturally fixed for us, which we are very much appreciative of. So after very much careful and prayerful consideration, if the, the city council would approve this project with these restrictions and these understandings in place, then the Ellis's have no objections to this project and support it fully to this council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Anyone else like to speak for or against?
Aye. Ryan Nash, uh, on 1130 Applewood with my wife. I wasn't able to make the first meeting due to being on vacation, so my mother came and represented us, and our main concern at the first meeting was safety. That drive came directly into my backyard where a two- and a four-year-old play all the time. Uh, he's really helped out on that, and it's moved over. I, and the Nash property is definitely the biggest beneficiary of this different plan he's come up with. Uh, we're, I'm not against it, you know? It's not really the best idea in my part, or what I would imagine to be perfect for, you know, my backyard, not exactly a parking lot just off to the side, but, but as long as he meets the restrictions that Rhonda has talked about and the fence that he's talked about with me, then we'd be okay with it, you know? It's just, it's what you have to deal with, you know? Not everything's our choice, but how do, I just wanted to, you know, make sure, how do you go about making sure that is all agreed upon and followed through with and stuff like that on, on his part, but that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else like to speak for or against? And counsel, it's back to you.
I, uh, I had spent most of the day today trying to figure out how I was gonna put this to bed tonight, Mr. Pennington, but by golly, it looks like you've done your homework this time. Huh? Huh, in the world. I got the reading over this little deposition that we did nine years, almost 10 years ago. Well, I didn't realize it'd been 10 years since we'd had this much fun. Uh, I, I am impressed, Mr. Pennington, I am impressed. I will defer to whatever y'all wanna do, but it sure doesn't look like a bad deal to me if they'll cut down to five houses.
In order to approve this, we'll need a motion. If we have no motion, then this dies for lack of a motion. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
You're welcome.
Next up is consideration to approve the city council meeting dates for the month of December. Um, we have a, um, as you know, we're gonna have a committee meeting on December the 5th to discuss the 2018 budget. DWI Court, DUI Court will be going on here at 5:30 at times, so I'd like for us to go to city hall, or if, if this group would like, we can wait and, and take a chance on it being out and, and meeting here at 6:30. So what's your wish is we can meet 5:30, city hall, or we can take a chance on it being opened up at, uh, 6:30, and we can meet here.
5:30 is fine with me.
Sure.
Okay. And, Mr. Jones, does that work for you?
6:30 would probably be better, but...
That's the reason I ask.
Yeah, we got DV day on Tuesdays, and I'm not sure what's on the docket for that day, but y'all can make 5:30, and I'll see what I can do. I don't wanna inconvenience everybody else.
Well, it's not an inconvenience, I just wondered. I mean, we can do whatever's good for y'all.
Well, if, if 6:30 would help me out a whole lot.
6:30 is fine with me.
Okay, that's fine.
Let's, let's plan on 6:30 here.
Okay.
And, uh, if, if this building is still occupied, then we'll move to city hall.
Okay.
And then also, I would like to, uh, if it's okay with y'all, I would like to, uh, cancel our December 26th meeting, uh, for the holidays, so we would get the budget on the 5th and vote on the budget the 12th unless there's some issues that y'all don't like, and then we could, we can see what we wanna do from there.
And we're still gonna get the draft budget on Friday?
Yes. Yes, you will have it by noon Friday.
Yep.
So I'll take a motion if those dates are...
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second to, uh, meet here at 6:30 PM on December the 5th to discuss budget and to cancel the December 26th meeting. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's what I was talking about.
Passes seven to zero. Uh, next up, I'd like to suspend the rules. Uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bell and Mr. Clausen to explain what we have going on here. UPS is wanting to try a different delivery type service this year in Conway, and, uh, Mr. Clausen had some, some issues he needed to clear up from a legal standpoint, so I would like to take a motion to ask that we suspend the rules and...
Go move.
And hear this.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Bell?
I'd like to apologize for the last minute, uh, nature of this, this request. UPS reached out to us back in September with this idea. Uh, we kinda floated around, uh, with the mayor and, and, um, the, the police chief and city attorney, and nobody seemed to have a problem with it except that it was in violation of our ordinance. Uh, what they would like to do, and I'll let Mr. Hardy speak to it more, but they'd like to use in a couple of neighborhoods in West Conway, Centennial Valley and, and the mayor's neighborhood, uh, use golf carts with trailers rather than big brown trucks to, uh, to deliver packages. Uh, it's a little more efficient, a little more energy-efficient, and, uh, cheaper for the company, actually. Uh, what has happened since they reached out to us, um, Chuck and I talked about it, and, and, and I kinda dropped the ball on it, and it got, got lost on my desk, uh, waiting on him, and he was waiting on me, so, uh, we'd like to look at it tonight. Uh, they are ready to get started, or they're all prepared, um, and I'm gonna let Mr. Hardy, uh, this is Kent Hardy with UPS, to, uh, explain a little bit about what their, their project is.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, can I pass these out to you?
Sure. Come on.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Mr. Bell, what was the other, what was the other, uh, area? Sunrun Park?
Yeah, Sunrun.
Thank you.
My, like Jack said, my name's Kent Hardy. Uh, I'm at, uh, I live at 32 Eppernay Circle in Little Rock. Um, I've been with UPS 38 years. I've been in Conway, I've managed Conway now since, uh, '07, so I've seen, uh, the fruits of y'all's labor. Business is good, I can tell you that. The, uh, the customers here and, and the shippers here in, in Conway are, are doing very well. Uh, as a matter of fact, we're, we're well above our projections, not only delivery, but also pickup. But what we're, what we're wanting to do, um, here in Conway and West Conway, um, specifically Centennial Valley, is use golf carts. I've managed, uh, over, over periods of time, Hot Springs, Little Rock, several different places, so high-density neighborhoods with sidewalks, uh, houses very close together are an opportunity for us, and, uh, we have a particular driver last year in this area, he delivered over 300 stops each day just in Centennial Valley. So if you've been to UPS, the little trailer on Halter Road at UPS, we've, we're almost, uh, exceeding our footprint. So what, by using, uh, golf carts in this, uh, area will allow us, uh, to gain an extra driver in Conway. So I'm basically gaining a driver using golf carts, uh, hiring some additional people to do all this work, uh, and we're not gonna spend as much fuel, uh, energy, and it, it's, it's better for us, and it certainly employs a lot of people. Um, I'm, I'm looking at seven people, uh, to do this. Uh, there's 48 employees at UPS. After next Friday, we'll have, we'll have over 80. Uh, in this particular group of people, there'll be, uh, six delivery people and one part-time management person. So, uh, in a nutshell, we don't wanna get on the road until af, uh, after 9:30. Uh, we'll, uh, package car driver will come up to Centennial Valley, we, we already have a pod station there, the driver will unload packages into the pod, the, uh, golf cart drivers will show up, they'll get their packages, and they'll make trips back and forth, and we'll be off the road, uh, and everything locked up before 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Um, that's, and, and on, I think the, the hours of service presentation, this is the presentation that, that Jack and I reviewed, uh, I didn't highlight the area, uh, like I should have, but basically, the southern, we're not gonna cross College, we're not gonna cross Hogan, and we won't cross, I think it's Sienna, we don't wanna get close Paget or, or the, the elementary school over there. Um, and, uh, like I said, we'll, we have, if you know anything about UPS, we're pretty, we micromanage everything. We know what driver or what golf cart person will deliver what addresses, so we know who's in what area and when they deliver. We can tell you, uh, to the minute when they deliver. I can tell you that the next day, I can't tell you that the, the moment they did it, but if you're tracking your package, you can figure that out. Um, but that's, that's what we'd like to do, uh, with your approval.
Make a motion, we waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
I, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's nothing, nothing major, I was just wondering, wondering about the lighting on the golf carts and stuff.
Uh, there is no law... There is no lighting. We're, we're actually renting the golf carts from Centennial Valley. And Mike is charging them for us. So, we'll be done before dark.
Okay, that's what I was-
Before 4 o'clock.
I said 9:30 to 4, he said. 9:30 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon.
That's not what I asked you about.
That's all, that's fine. I got some bad information coming up.
He's sitting there listening, he's turning those hearing aids up a bit.
Ooh.
And so, the biggest issue was the fact that we have an ordinance that says you can't drive golf carts on city streets. So, that's why we have to-
Yeah, the ordinance basically specified it has to go from the owner's home to the country club and back. And so, we're basically adding provision to allow the mayor to approve certain commercial purposes and-
For a short time.
Yeah, they're temporary and commercial purposes.
I'm, I'm, I hate to be the one to keep asking questions, but is, what's, what's the danger of this? Anybody know?
Well, they might hit all the other golf carts that already dropped through.
That's what we were saying.
There's a hidden danger.
I mean, I'm just- Mr. Jones, that's a good point. You know, somebody could get run over. I mean, we, we have, or somebody could hurt themselves and we're-
No, I was, I was thinking more about y'all getting hit than-
Right, right. The person on the golf cart. Right, right.
Yeah.
So, and, and we have a-
Hold harmless.
Hold harmless agreement. If anybody gets hurt, Centennial Valley is not responsible, City of Conway is not responsible. It's just like if a driver had an accident or, or got hurt. We take full responsibility of any damage we do or any injuries as a result of what we do or to our people.
I wouldn't, I wasn't really worried about the liability. I was just thinking about somebody getting injured. I wasn't trying to say that we was, never mind.
No, no, I, but it's a very good point. And we, this would end on Christmas Eve. Christmas Eve would be the last day. And then if this works out well, you know, we would like to start, maybe have that opportunity next year as well.
Okay. Are you worried there's not going to be a cart available for your tee times?
I never played golf in my life.
I'll just ask.
I've thrown things that people play, but I never play.
Oh, I, I didn't mean that. Just turned my mic off.
They're not going to be in gifts, do they?
I haven't had gifts in years, man.
I make a motion for adoption in the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mail?
Aye.
And the mercy clause? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mail?
Aye.
Do we have any further business?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
When are we giving the, when are the employees' Christmas party? Have y'all decided yet?